...for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Zwicker. Mr. Taylor.
Here.
Mr. Corman.
Here.
Ms. Palmer.
Here.
Mr. Person.
Here.
Mr. Prince.
Here.
Ms. Breyer. Roll call, Mr. Mayor, two absent.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
I move that the absent council members be excused.
Second.
Been moved by Mr. Taylor, second by Mr. Corman, that council members Breyer and Zwicker be excused. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. First item on my agenda is a proclamation for Salvation Army Week.
Proclamation. Whereas the Salvation Army's only business in the community of Renton, as everywhere, is still human business undertaken with joy for the family of all humankind, and whereas through sound, innovative, and professional services, the Salvation Army serves the people of Renton with unshakable faith in all, no matter how desperate the situation, and views all people as people with possibilities, and whereas the Salvation Army acts on behalf of all the residents of our community with neither salvation nor any other condition prerequisite, nor expecting any thanks, yet nonetheless welcoming community support, now therefore I, Dennis Law, Mayor of the city of Renton, do hereby proclaim May fourteenth through twentieth, two thousand twelve, to be Salvation Army Week in the city of Renton, and I encourage all citizens to join me in saluting the steadfast men and women who bind up the broken-hearted and renew the heart of our community by their quiet service of compassion. In witness whereof, I've here to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Renton to be affixed this fourteenth day of May, two thousand twelve, signed Dennis Law, Mayor of the city of Renton.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
I move that the proclamation be adopted as read.
Second.
Been moved by Mr. Taylor, second by Ms. Palmer, that this proclamation be adopted as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Captain Chris Ayers here from Salvation Army.
I just want to say thank you, Mayor Law, for an honorable proclamation, and it accompanies the National Salvation Army Week that was implemented by President Dwight D. Eisenhower back in nineteen, back in nineteen fifty-four, and he wanted to pay tribute to the Salvation Army and to instill in us all the importance of giving back to our communities, support those who continue to struggle to make ends meet. If I could just share with you for a couple moments, that statement is true in the city of Renton and its surrounding communities. We have four hundred and fifty-one volunteers that have helped out at the Salvation Army Food Bank, contributing thirteen hundred and sixty-three hours to make sure that that food bank is effectively running. Three thousand four hundred and seventy grocery requests were filled. That is fourteen hundred more than last month, in the month of March, and we handed out two hundred and sixteen clothing vouchers. Our community supper that we have, we had a hundred and two volunteers come for two hundred and four volunteer hours, and we served seventeen hundred and ninety-three meals during the month of April. Utility and rental assistance was provided to forty-five families. That was up from twenty-two in the month of March. And in addition to all of this, I want to share with you that we rent out our building to things like Roto Care, as well as legal assistance on Tuesday nights, and other various entities such as providing tax relief from the months of January through the month of April for those making fifty thousand or less for tax preparation. One last thing I want to share with you is that while we're seeing those needs increase, we're doing the most that we can with the resources that we have available. And one of those things that I want to share with you is the financial concern that I have personally for the Salvation Army in this community. Tomorrow night, we have our annual dinner that I just, I would be remiss to not plug in front of all of you. We have Richard Lemieux coming for us, or to speak at our dinner, which has been sold out now for about three weeks. He's speaking, he's the author of Breakfast at Sally's, and then tomorrow night as well, right after that, in fact, it's open to the community for twenty-five dollars a ticket. We have David Legorria coming. He is an internationally award-winning trumpeter that got his start here at the Salvation Army in Renton at the age of eight. Fantastic story to tell. I would invite the city to come on out, and we'll be selling tickets now, and the box office will be open at the Renton Ikea Performing Arts Center tomorrow at three o'clock. City Council and Mayor, thank you so much for making this happen. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Chris. Thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda are a couple of special presentations. Terry Agashyama.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Of course, I love to come and brag about the wonderful employees that we have here in Renton, and this is a great opportunity for me to shine the light on somebody that kind of often stands behind the scenes but just gets a lot of things done. Last week, the Washington Recreation and Parks Association held their annual conference, and one of our own received one of their highest honors, and that was the Citation of Merit Professional, and that was Leslie Batlock. So she's very modest about this, but if you don't mind, I'd like to share a few things that you already know about, but maybe the public doesn't know. Since Leslie's worked here in the city, we've received over ten point five million dollars in grant funds that she's applied for and received. We always laugh that there probably isn't anything built in Renton that Leslie didn't have a hand in or got a grant to make it happen, so we always thank her for that. She's acquired over two hundred and eighty acres of parks. She will tell you that she did it with Larry Warren. The two of them are quite a duo when they're going out purchasing land and finding the right things to make sure our city's protected for the future. And if I could just tell a few of the capital projects that she's overseeing that total over thirteen million dollars, including two trails and five parks, and see if these don't ring a bell for you. The Cedar River Trail from I-405 to Ron Regis, the Springbrook Trail Boardwalk that she worked with Ron Struck on, the Veterans Park, Ron Regis Park, Piazza Park, the Heritage Park, Riverview Park, and then there was the Urban Forestry Plan and the Pest Management Plan, and then there's all the things that she serves on both statewide and regionally, running the Parks Directors for King County, sitting on boards for the governor, making sure that the standards for the state meet the high criteria that we also set here for Renton. But most of all, she loves her job. Most people, and she's very modest about it, don't realize that Gene Coulon was her father, and that he was one of the previous presidents of Washington Recreation and Parks Association, and how fortunate we are that she's here to continue that legacy on our city. But we love working with her, and we love that she is a bulldog, and that she likes to make things happen, and that she takes such pride in this city, making it the best place and having one of the best park systems that there is. So I hope you will join me in congratulating Leslie on being the Citation of Merit Professional winner for WRPA. Mr. Mayor, if you wouldn't mind coming down and getting your picture taken with you, and you can say a few words if you like.
Take a couple shots.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it really is an honor to stand here before you this evening, but really, I'm sharing it with everyone here because this certainly wasn't accomplished by myself. I work with a wonderful group of people. I work with, have worked with, and have worked with wonderful mayors and council members over almost twenty-two years now, and the citizens of Renton, and it's really just a fantastic place to work, and I just hope that everyone can share and experience outdoor recreation activities in our parks and natural areas for future generations. Thank you for the opportunity.
Congratulations, Leslie. We're really proud of you. That's terrific. Thank you. Also want to thank Terry Agashyama, who's been gleaming from ear to ear ever since the word came out that Leslie got this award. Thank you, Terry. Next, we're honored to have Judge Harado with us this evening, and Joe McGuire, the Court Administrator, to give you the two thousand eleventh annual report. Judge?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, good evening. I am Judge Terry Harado, the Municipal Court Judge here in Renton, and I am pleased to present to you this evening the court's two thousand eleven annual report. Before I turn it over to Mr. McGuire to actually get into the nuts and bolts of it, I want to first thank and recognize the people who helped us get this published in such a nice form, and that would be Beth Haglin and Carl Hurst. Otherwise, we would have probably just mimeographed something and brought it up to you. And if you remember what a mimeograph is, you're probably as old as I am. I also want to publicly recognize Joe McGuire. This will be his last public appearance before the, before the city council of Renton. He is retiring, and I am incredibly envious, but he has been my right hand for as long as I've been here. He was on the interview committee on the, at the time that I was appointed by Mayor Tanner, and I recall that Joe had asked me what my vision for the Court Administrator was, and I told him, well, be a Court Administrator, because I have absolutely no administrative experience with personnel issues and that sort of thing. I'm a lawyer, and so I expected him to be a professional administrator, and he has met my expectations without question. I'm going to miss him, and I think the city's going to miss him. He is a hard worker. He's dedicated to excellence. He's dedicated to the rule of law and the court rules, and he really, really deserves my best wishes. So at this time, I am going to turn it over to Joe, and he will then go through the nuts and bolts of the court report, and then will be available to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Judge. Congratulations, Joe. You served your sentence.
Wow. Sounds like it's one that I can serve and be pretty comfortable with. Thanks, Judge. I appreciate those kind remarks. Yeah, been looking forward to quit a while, but it's almost here. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I appreciate you having us in this afternoon inside to share with you our annual report. This is the tenth court report of my tenure. There were a few years we missed here recently, so this one actually kind of recaps a bit of two thousand eight through two thousand eleven. As you might see, this person's moved up next to Judge Harado, and this is Ms. Bonnie Woodrow, and she, Judge has picked her to be my more-than-able replacement. She's been in the judicial system for twenty years plus, and has recently been the Court Administrator at Olympia, and I know she will do every bit as well as I and probably better. Backing up, two thousand eight. Lots happened since then. The way that I kind of term it is two thousand eight, where we were in the glory years. We were growing and traveling as fast as we could and doing rapid growth, and as we have crept forward and run into two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve, the growth has slowed down to a crawl. It would maybe at times be generous, but we have a lot less resources through necessity, and so now I say that we're kind of running in place. We're still running as fast as we can, but there's a lot fewer of us to do the job. I think overall, the city and the court have done very well, thanks to the administration and council that has served it. History shows that the court, during that time period, has gained a few things. Court security is one. Back in two thousand eight, we had none. We now have a remodeled court lobby. We have the scanner, and we have the metal detector, and we have a person there staffing it all the hours that the court is open. It's a primary step. It doesn't have a x-ray machine or anything like that, but it is a substantial first step, and I think it goes a long way to protecting the citizens and the employees of the city of Renton. We now have, or we also had several years ago, an extensive, what I call, the Benson Hill remodel. We added the judges' chambers. We added a second probation officer's office. We had a second jury room. Unfortunately, most of those things are not filled, but we're ready for the turnaround in the economy and the next annexation, if there is one. We also have now defendants that are sentenced to jail by the judge are now sent to SCORE, the South Correctional Entity, brand-new, fantastic jail that we use, rather than the jail that we had as a kind of a interim jail in the second floor of the city hall. And I would encourage any of you that haven't been there, and any of the public as well, if they can set up and get a tour of the SCORE facility, you will see a state-of-the-art, very impressive facility. It's very well done. That's a great improvement for the court to send people there and for the city to house them there as well. The court has undergone an assessment from the National Center of State Courts. This analysis by folks that are not, that don't have a dog in the fight, so to speak, made to the court recommendations, thirty-eight recommendations, and I believe we've adopted either thirty-two or thirty-three of those recommendations. We had a presentation on that some time back as well. But again, an outside look that helped us in many ways, some small and some a little bigger, to make sure that we stayed efficient, took a good look at our operations. The court now accepts case filings through email, through, excuse me, not through emails, but electronically. Both the prosecutor's office and the Renton Police Department send us filings electronically. We still get some paper from the police department, and it's, I doubt that'll ever go away, but we're well over ninety percent of our filings electronically. Again, another way, excuse me, that we can remain efficient and do things in a very effective manner. Court records. I think you all know that we are court record, and all of our hearings have to be recorded for audio, and so we now record the auto digitally. It's stored online, and there are no more CDs and tapes to copy to give to folks. They can simply go online and listen to the court records, and that, those are retained, well, forever's a long time, but they're retained until we tell them to get rid of them. They'll keep them for years. That's all history. I believe you all were given copies of the electronic, of the court report electronically, and if you need details, you can certainly read them there, and we'll be happy to answer any questions on those particular items here in just a few minutes. The here and now, there's one item that I think is, I know it's not new to the mayor, and Bonnie's had some exposure to it, but where we can really make some hay in the court is to have an electronic content management system. We already have what I would call the backend. We have the storage capability now with Laserfish program to take closed court files, scan the documents into this system, and store them electronically instead of hard copy. Now, the downside is, at this point, that a clerk has to scan twenty to eighty pages, sometimes more, of each court file, and the return is just not there yet. It saves us a little bit of time on the rear end if we have to look anything up that's been archived, but the real payoff will come when we get a electronic document system, management system, the core of which is a electronic forms library. Now, thanks to, mainly to Kristi Shoren in our office, we do have all of our forms electronically ready to go, but what this system will do is we will create a file, electronic file. It will be pre-filled with information from the judicial information system, such as the case number, the defendant's name, address, birthday, those kind of things, and whenever you need a court hearing's coming up and you need documents, you drag into that court file any documents you need from our eighty-five or so documents and forms that the court currently uses, and as soon as you pop them into that file, those documents are automatically filled with all the information. There's no typing, no handwriting. That's all automatic. When it comes time for a court hearing, instead of making copies or having multi-part forms, the clerk, the judge, the prosecutor, the public defender, will all have that document in front of them electronically, and they can look at the document that is in question at the time, and they can also look at other documents that have to do with that case. This will nearly eliminate all the forms the court has, and our court budget for forms is over twenty thousand a year. It'll cut our copying probably between two-thirds and three-quarters. There will be no stacking the physical files on a shelf, pulling them for court, updating them, putting them back on the shelf. If somebody misplaces a file, there's no searching from desk to desk to desk to see who has that file, and ultimately, it would save room as the old files run their course. It would save all the room we do with shelving for us and as well as the city clerk. So this is a big deal that would show really continuing savings for the court and the city, and some that also will help other departments down the road. I'm quite sure that Ms. Woodrow will give to you a program request for that this coming budget cycle, and I would really ask that you give it some serious consideration. Enough for my selling job. We looked at the caseload report for the last couple of three years, and there is only one, all cases are down since two thousand nine, two thousand and ten were big years. Tons of work in the court, and the caseload, the case filings are down, but one that kind of concerns us as a public safety issue is that traffic infractions this year are down fifty percent from what they were in two thousand nine, two thousand and ten, and we have noticed that, we think it's no coincidence that DUI filings are down by twenty-five percent, and licensing-related violations are down by over forty percent. So those are the kind of things that happen when an officer actually makes a traffic stop, that some of these other things are discovered, and unless we have a lot better behavior, which we can certainly hope for from our citizens, it is something that maybe needs a bit of a second look, again, in our humble opinion. I'm going to kind of go back to something that I have said in a couple of memos to the mayor, and that you may or may not have heard, but since I've been here and since before I got here, Renton has had what I like to call a Cadillac court. And I don't mean a Cadillac court in that we have so many fancy and rich resources. I mean a court that when a customer, a defendant, the public calls on the phone, now they have to go through an electronic phone device, but ultimately, a person answers every phone call. When someone comes to the front counter, if there's more than a couple people in line, somebody else in the office gets up and goes to the front counter and works with that person, even if it's not, even if their workspace is not one of the counter stations. When we have something happen in court, our electronic dockets are updated no later than two days after, and usually the day after the court action. When we receive a payment in the mail, that thing is in the bank by the next day. So these are things that could be pushed back, could be moved around, could, you could have long lines, we could have one receptionist, things that could happen down the road if we're squeezed too hard. It's been an honor to be able to give the service that we have, and I know that Ms. Woodrow and the staff and the judge will continue to try to go there, but through some ideas that already been discussed and working together with you folks, I think that we can, we can maintain that. And in closing, I would like to tell you all that I enjoy working with you and your predecessors. Fifteen years has gone pretty fast. We've had our bits of ups and downs here and there, which I think is the way it should to be, but it should be, but all things considered, it's certainly been a pleasure for me. I've enjoyed the city. I've always been treated well. The court's been treated fairly, and I'll miss everybody. I'll probably get over it, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe.
So if you have any questions regarding the report, we would be more than happy to answer them.
Any questions from council? Mr. Taylor?
Yes, I don't recall receiving a copy of the report.
Yeah, I apologize to that. I noticed that from Ms. Palmer, too, so I'll make sure you have them tomorrow.
It was, it's attached to the agenda.
Oh, electronically? Okay.
Well, I want to thank you for the opportunity to come here and address you, and look forward to this next year and the challenges that come with it, and the following year, which I'm not really looking forward to. But I'm sure that we'll all work through it, and we'll be a better community for it. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Judge. We appreciate, we really appreciate the working relationship we have with your court and your staff, and Joe, we're going to miss you. Thank you for all the years of good work, and Bonnie, welcome aboard.
And you have some overlap, it looks like. Joe can train Bonnie a little bit. I'll try to get around to, if some of you folks are in, and introduce you to Bonnie a little bit.
That'll be great.
Great.
Thank you. Thanks, Judge. Okay, administrative report.
Administrative report. In addition to day-to-day activities, the following is worthy of note for the week. The King County Road Service Division will be making repairs to Renton Avenue South between South One Twenty-Eighth Street and South One Thirtieth Street in unincorporated King County that was damaged by storms. They'll replace the culvert, rebuild the rockery and embankment, and reconstruct the sidewalk and roadway. The construction will be done over a three-week period and will be complete in late June, July, or early August, two thousand twelve. Renton Avenue South will be closed to through traffic during this three-week project. Routing of traffic during the street closure will be in both directions along South One Thirtieth Street east of Renton Avenue South within the city of Renton, and then along the Eighty-Fourth Avenue South and South One Twenty-Eighth Street within unincorporated King County. King County plans to notify Metro and Renton School District and to provide intensive outreach to residents, businesses, and emergency responders. And that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Bonnie. We don't have anybody sign up for audience comment. We'll move on to the consent agenda. We have nine items on the consent agenda for council consideration. Are there any items that council member like pulled for discussion?
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Been moved by Mr. Corman, second by Mr. Taylor, that council approve the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to unfinished business, Mr. Corman.
No unfinished business. Mr. Mayor?
Okay, Ms. Palmer?
Yes, I have one committee report.
Community Services Committee report. Two thousand twelve Neighborhood Grant Project Applications. The Community Services Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the following two thousand twelve Neighborhood Grant Project Awards totaling twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-two dollars. One, Evendale Homeowners Association. Purchase and installation of two engraved granite entrance signs and landscaping to identify their neighborhood, four thousand dollars. Two, Falcon Ridge Homeowners Association. Reconstruct current foot bridges located within neighborhood on South Eighth Drive and Southeast Eighth Place, and landscape by adding perennial plants. Project also includes reconstructing the Stone Wishing Well setting on public right of way, two thousand one hundred and eleven dollars. Three, La Crosse Homeowners Association. Add a storage shed for tools to an existing community garden to be shared among the residents. Any extra produce is shared with the local food bank, two thousand three hundred dollars. Four, Liberty Grove Homeowners Association. Revitalize the common area by installing timbers around the perimeter of the play area, safety surfaces, and grading the rough boundary within the play area, three thousand four hundred and forty-four dollars. Renton Hill Neighborhood Association. Residents will refurbish and reinforce entrance signs located at South Fourth and Main and South Third and Cedar in an effort to protect them from vandals. Will also add new plants to enhance the sign, two thousand nine hundred and seventy-two dollars. Six, South Renton Neighborhood Association. Funds to hire a professional artist to design a neighborhood brand to be based upon the former railroad bridge that was fondly known as the Four Cow Bridge that was recently razed and rehabilitated, five thousand dollars. Seven, Sunset Neighborhood Association. This project consists of implementing Phase Two for their community garden located on Calvary Baptist Church property at One Zero Three Two Edmonds Avenue Northeast, which will benefit the local residents. Excess produce will be donated to the local food bank, five thousand eighty-eight dollars. Eight, Tiffany Park Neighborhood Association. The project consists of building a kiosk in the Ginger Creek Urban Park as another way for neighbors to communicate and provide information within their neighborhood. They will also plant mature and drought-resistant plants such as azaleas and rhododendrons, one thousand forty-eight dollars. And nine, Versello Homeowners Association. Residents plan to plant six arbor vida at each monument leading up to the Versello neighborhood. They will also add some perennials, mulch, or bark, and include a cleanup of the neighborhood, one thousand six hundred and ninety-nine dollars. This report is signed by the three committee members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Palmer.
I want to point out that each neighborhood that receives grant funds also puts in sweat equity. There's a requirement that the neighbors put in a certain amount of their own efforts when they're doing all of these, so it's not just we hand them money and they go out and buy something. The neighbors have to come together and work together, which is what makes this such a great program. So with that, I move that council concur with the committee report.
Second.
Been moved by Ms. Palmer, second by Mr. Prince. The council concur with the Community Services Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Person?
Uh, no unfinished business.
Okay, Mr. Prince?
No unfinished business.
Okay, Mr. Taylor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Finance Committee does have a Finance Committee report.
Finance Committee report. Memorandum of Understanding with Finance-
Finance Committee Report. Memorandum of Understanding with Fire Protection District Number 40. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve a memorandum of understanding with Fire Protection District 40 for provision of communication and technology services. Fire District 40 agrees to compensate the city up to $32,000 per year for communication services and $6,000 per year for technology services. The committee further recommends that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign the memorandum of understanding. This is signed by the committee vice chair and member.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Taylor, second by Mr. Person, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, moving on to resolutions and ordinances. We have four resolutions and two ordinances for second and final reading.
The first resolution regards the interlocal agreement with cities regarding sharing of taxpayer information. A resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an interlocal agreement entitled Agreement for Sharing Taxpayer Information Between Participating Cities.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
I move that the resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Taylor, second by Ms. Palmer, that this resolution be adopted as read. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The next resolution regards amendment of Resolution 4138 regarding grant application for aquatic lands. And a resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a memorandum of understanding with... I'm sorry. Let's see here. Excuse me a moment, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry. What happened here? The other one. Okay. This is Fire District 40. What's that? Okay. I'm sorry. Okay. A resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, amending Resolution Number 4138, authorizing application for funding assistance for an aquatic lands enhancement account project to the Recreation and Conservation Office as provided in Chapter 79, 9245 of the WAC, and subsequent legislative action. This is for the Riverview Park Pedestrian Bridge and Habitat Project.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I move the resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Ms. Palmer, that this resolution be adopted as read. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The next resolution is also an amendment resolution regarding application for land and water conservation funding. A resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, amending Resolution Number 4139, authorizing application for funding assistance for a land and water conservation fund project to the Recreation and Conservation Office as provided in Title 16, Chapter 4601-4, as amended, WAC 286, and subsequent legislative action. This is Riverview Park Pedestrian Bridge and Habitat Project.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
I move that the resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Taylor, second by Ms. Palmer, that this resolution be adopted as read. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The last resolution is Memorandum of Understanding Regarding Fire Protection District 40. A resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a memorandum of understanding with King County Fire Protection District Number 40.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
I move that this resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Taylor, second by Ms. Palmer, that this resolution be adopted as read. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The first ordinance for second and final reading regards appeal of 1983 Shoreline Program Ordinance. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, repealing ordinance Number 3758 relating to the Shoreline Master Program Regulations.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince?
I move the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Ms. Palmer, that this ordinance be adopted as read and requires a roll call.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Corman?
Aye.
Ms. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor. All ayes.
The ayes have it.
And lastly, for second and final reading, is ordinance regarding the code citation correction in the fee schedule. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending Section 48110 of Chapter 8 permits general and appeals of Title IV Development Regulations of City Code by correcting a code citation to the fee schedule.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Person?
Move the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Ms. Palmer, that this ordinance be adopted as read and it requires a roll call.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Corman?
Aye.
Ms. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor. All ayes.
The ayes have it. Thank you, Bonnie. Moving on to new business. Mr. Corman?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to announce that committee the whole meeting for next Monday, May 21st, 2012, 5:30 p.m. It'll be in the seventh floor conferencing center. Two items on that agenda. The first is regional committee updates, and the second item is emerging issues in economic development and transportation. And that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Palmer?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Person?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I want to announce the committee next Monday, May 21st, at 5:00 p.m. in the council conference room. One item, actually, two items. Ordinance amending our Renton Municipal Code 6-10-1, and secondly, emerging issues in public safety.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Prince?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and Mr. Taylor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Finance Committee will be meeting May 21st, Monday, at 4:00 p.m. There will be four items on the agenda. One will be vouchers. Ordinance amending Renton Municipal Code 3-4-3. Another ordinance amending Renton Municipal Code 5-23, and emerging issues in revenue streams. And that is all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Okay, next is audience comment. Was there anybody who wanted to address the council? What's the wish of the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, can I ask a question? It's a terrible thing to do, I'm sure, Beth Asher. But I'm curious about the taxpayer information, since I am a taxpayer. What information are you sharing and why? Because I fail to see why Bellevue, Bellingham, or Seattle would be interested in me or my information. And it says taxpayer information, so I'm just curious.
I'm not sure what you're referring to.
Yeah, it's one of the consent agenda items.
On the consent agenda, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
On the consent agenda, on Item 70, Administrative Services Department recommends approval of an interlocal agreement including the cities of Bellevue, Bellingham, and Seattle, which are the participating cities for the purpose of sharing taxpayer and/or audit information among member cities.
And so that's a tax administrators' roundtable. So they'll be discussing the different jurisdictions.
They're just comparing, like, base rates and saying X amount of people do this and X amount of people, and the values are over here and over there and that kind of thing. Okay, that's cool. Thank you.
Thank you.
No tax increases.
Mr. Wish of the council? Yes, Mr.-
Move we adjourn?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Prince, that we adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
See pizza delivery boxes. After trying to throw them in the garbage or sneak them into the recycling bin, followed by a few failed attempts at decorative art, then Ethan heard about recycling pizza-